All rise for the pledge, and we're going to face the flag in the back. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silence for the men and women of our armed services and those we lost to the COVID-19 pandemic, which in the United States has now surpassed 500,000 people. Thank you. The notice requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act of the state of New Jersey have been satisfied by the inclusion of the date, time, and place of this meeting and the notice of regular meetings adopted by this board on January 4th, 2021. Such schedule and notice of meetings is posted in the municipal building, the Mount Olive Library, the Board of Education offices, and the six schools, and was submitted to the Daily Record for Publication on January 8th, 2021, and was filed with the Clerk of Mount Olive Township on January 5th, 2021. Roll call in.
Mrs. Cohen?
Here.
Dr. Gales?
Here.
Mr. Kemna?
Here.
Mrs. Weimert?
Here.
Mr. Robinson?
Here.
Mr. Stevens? Mr. Strelachi?
Here.
Mr. Zire?
Here.
Dr. Giordano?
Here, and for the record, Mr. Stevens had emailed me and let me know he could not make it tonight's meeting. He had an emergency come up.
Thank you.
Approval of minutes, Dr. Gales?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the February 8, 2021 Minutes Action Item 2.1.
Question or comments for the board? Seeing none, roll call man?
Dr. Gales?
Yes.
Mr. Kemna?
Yes.
Mrs. Weimert?
Mrs. Weimert?
Sorry, yeah, yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Here.
Mr. Strelachi?
Yes.
Mr. Zire?
Yes.
Mrs. Cohen?
Yeah.
Dr. Giordano?
Yes. Communication petitions from the superintendent?
We received a message from the county clerk that it looks like the primary in June will be an in-person primary, and therefore, they may need use of the board office, so she was just giving me an update on that.
Thank you. From the Board of Ed? Seeing none? Student liaison reports, ladies, the floor is yours.
Okay, so for Black History Month, on February 12th, the district hosted four keynote speakers throughout the day. It was Julius Moore, Keter O'Orgey, Yvette Long, and Cornell Thomas. And Jess and I both enjoyed hearing from Keter especially since she's a notable alumni from MHS and provided interesting insight into specific issues that she experienced from being a black woman. And then for Black History Month in our school, NHS created a periodic table of notable black figures who contributed politically, artistically, musically, or scientifically in society. And for National Math Honor Society, they recognized black mathematicians in the math wing in MHS. And for Honor Society, NHS is getting ready for the new inductees, and ceremony will be on March 9th. And NHS, Science National Honor Society, World Language Honor Society, all offered peer tutoring. And in place of office hours, Homework Club is offered on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday in the library.
And then just to get into the sports world, gymnastics, volleyball, and wrestling are all going to be starting on March 1st. The male athlete of the month of January is John Luca O'Toole. He's a sophomore and he plays ice hockey. And then the female athlete of the month for January is Julia Clatt. She's also a sophomore, and she plays basketball. Our current record for ice hockey is 4, 3, and 1. Boy swimming is 1 and 0, girl swimming is 0 and 1, but hopefully, that'll change because they have a meet against Kittlelawn tomorrow. Boys' basketball is 3 and 4, and girls' basketball is 1 and 6. And for testing, the seal of biliteracy was delivered on February 8th and 9th to a number of students. And we'd like to thank Senor Cruz, who is the coordinator for the test. PSAT 10 is going to be administered this Wednesday, February 24th, and MOHS is going to be holding the ACT on March 2nd. And that's everything.
Super. Question or comments for the board? Seeing none, thank you ladies, be careful driving home, you certainly don't have to wait for the rest of the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Personnel committee report, Ms. Cohen?
Sure, the Personnel Committee met tonight. We had, with me and Mr. Rob Zwicki, we had Bill Robinson, John Kemna, and who else was on, Rob? Gales? Huh? I'm sorry, I was trying to remember who was on, it was a, yes. Rob, there was one more person on that I...
Mr. Kemna, Mr. Robinson, you, and myself, that's it.
That was it, okay, all right. It was a quick meeting. We talked about staffing update with respect to COVID-19. We are down to 17 on quarantine on the staffing, from our staffing up, which was at 86. So that's a nice improvement. And 93% of the staffing is all good, so we are moving in the right direction, it's good news. We are very happy to introduce Pete Zuccalulo tonight. He is going to be our new boys varsity baseball coach, and we're happy to have him. He is a Rutgers grad, he's a Hall of Famer actually at Rutgers. He played on three major league teams. He was recently Coach of the Year at Morris Catholic, where he spent some time. And he is a resident of Mount Olive, which is great, and we're looking forward to having him. He is here tonight. We're still looking into the AIDS situation, how to most efficiently use our AIDS, budget issues, and just general timing and all of that, so we're continuing to do that. We had a, we have a professional development conference on the agenda. And then we just had our routine action items, which are on for everyone to see. And that's about it, any questions, comments?
Seeing none? And I accidentally skipped over the superintendent's report, I was thinking of trying to move the meeting on a little bit quicker, but I forgot. The floor is yours, Dr. Z.
Dr. Giordano dreads when I talk more than two minutes, so I'll try and go as quickly as possible. But my superintendent report tonight is the culmination of a year of work by our educators, community members, and I'm very excited about this announcement, as we talk about how can we get closer to what is normal. We're approaching the one-year anniversary. It'll be a year next week, when I was summoned down to Trenton and told that we were going to have to close school. That was Thursday, March 5th, March 6th. I consulted with the board, and we made the decision on March 9th to have a professional development day, to close school, to plan for closing school for two weeks. And you guys know the rest of what happened. So here we are, and one of the things I want to talk about, that all of our decisions are, you know, everything is funneled through the lens of our strategic plan. And I thank the board so much for working with me and the administration on this plan, but our first goal is always safety, our second goal is personalized learning, and our third goal is social emotional learning and social emotional care for our kids. And so we've focused on that during the pandemic closure, through the varieties of our hybrid, the iterations of our hybrid plan. And now as we go forward, I just want to give a little history of where we have come since May. So in May and June, a stakeholder committee of over 60 members of the community worked to put together a reentry plan with four options. And if you guys remember, those four options were Option 1, Traditional School Day, Option 2, a traditional school day with social distancing, Option 3 is a split schedule, and Option 4 is virtual distance learning. Our top goal has always been to get to traditional, to a traditional school day. We're not there yet, but we're the closest that we have been. To date, we have been operating under Option 3 and Option 4, an A/B cohort model, with Cohort C being a remote cohort for children and families who select to do so. So the big announcement tonight is that we are going to be able to shift as of March 22nd to Option 2 and Option 4. What that means is, based upon the revised guidance from the New Jersey Department of Health that was issued on January 19th, 2021, sorry, and the CDC guidance that was released last week, on March 22nd, we are going to combine Cohort A and Cohort B into a single cohort that'll be known as Cohort IP, for cohort in-person. Our Cohort C will now be known as Cohort V for virtual. Cohort C is not going away, it's not going to go away this year, and it, I think it'll be here next year as well. Students can switch from Cohort C into Cohort IP as of May 1st. So if you're a current Cohort C student, you have to wait until March 1st to switch into the in-person. And the reason why is we want to get a month, about a month of school under our belt of doing the combined cohorts, and also to make sure that we don't get another surge after spring break. What that means is that we'll be operating at about 60% capacity in our buildings, maybe a little bit less. Currently, we have about 30% of our students approximately in Cohort A and 30 in Cohort B. So we'll be operating at about 60% capacity. So we put together, there'll be a message going out to parents this evening about this, and we have our nice little infographic here, the marauder's driving the train, and we are moving full speed ahead with going back to Option 2 and Option 4, and so families have a choice. So folks might say, you know, why are you doing this now? We consulted with the Department of Health, we looked at all the research from the CDC, from CHOP, and also the Chan School of Public Policy at Harvard University. Cases are down 77%. Our mitigation strategies have helped us to ensure that we haven't had one case of transmission in our schools. Any of the positive cases have come from outside in the community. So like I've said many times before, curtailing community spread is our best strategy. But what are the things that set us apart, why we're able to do this safely now, and what are our mitigation strategies? First of all, we have MERV-13 filtration in all of our buildings. That is huge. We're one of the only school districts in the state that can say that we have MERV-13 filtration in all of our schools. One of the new things that we'll be doing, based upon the guidance, is that on every desk and every lunchroom table, there will be Plexiglas dividers, you can see what it looks like here. So in case we are ever less than six feet, we're still going to try and ensure six feet social distancing at all point in time, but as per the guidance from the DOH and the CDC, we'll be using Plexiglas dividers if we are less than six feet, but we're going to have them in place anyway. So that's an extra precaution. So we just ordered 5,000 of those, they came in today, actually. The other thing is that we're going to have, as we do now, sanitizing wipes and hand sanitizer available to every student and to every staff member. We have masks and PPE, including face shields, available for every student and staff members. We're going to continue with our daily screening, and something that also sets us apart, that we've had now for almost two months, is we have weekly onsite testing. So when you read the CDC guidance, that's an aspirational thing for most districts. That really sets us apart, that we have that, it's available to all of our community members, that we have walk-in testing, we have antibody testing and COVID testing, and that helps us as well. And then the other thing is we have our rigorous contact tracing, as per the Mount Olive Department of Health and the NJSIAI. Something else that I think sets us apart is that, you know, many districts, you read the newspapers, you hear about many districts talking about, well, what are we going to do about learning loss in the summer of 2021? The thing that I'm most proud of is that we kept our RTI program running last March, last April, last May, last June, all through the summer and all through this year. Our Mount Olive Success Academy treating almost every kid as if they were Tier 2, unless we found out otherwise. And our executive director of personalized learning, Mrs. Schlier, is here with us. She gets all the credit for running that program, it's been absolutely fantastic. So we're not waiting to summer 2021 to tackle learning loss. We've been tackling it in real time all the way through. And a bunch of educators have been involved with that, and I thank all of them for their support. So how are we going to communicate this out to faculty, staff, and to parents? Today, I met with the 100 people on our district-wide reentry committee, and went over the plan and answered all their questions. I'll be doing staff meetings divided by grade level on Thursday. Tomorrow, following up to my communication tonight, I'll be doing a Parents University at 5:00 PM. And then I'll be doing another one at noon on Thursday, some working parents like the Noon Parents University, so I'll be doing both of those via Facebook Live. And then next Monday, we'll be doing more in-depth Zoom sessions, one for PK to 5 parents, one for 6 to 8 parents, and one through 9 through 12 parents. So parents, check your email for those links and the passwords to make sure that they are secure. And please, don't share those passwords and links with anybody else, that's a big help, please don't do that. And last, you know, one of the things that I think we've done a great job with is we've supported our families in a variety of ways. And one of those, you know, bright spots has been our meal distribution and our meal program. And I can't say enough good things about Sidexo. They came into this district and they've been great for us. If you don't follow Mount Olive Eats on Instagram, please do so. It's where you can see the menus every day for in-person, you can all see the meal pickup. But we will continue with virtual, meal pickup for virtual students, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, here at the middle school. And we have James Karithia, our Director of Security here, who's an integral part of that. And then for our in-person kids, they'll be able to pick up their meals in school. So we're going to be continuing with that program. And for our parents who need childcare, we will continue to provide Mount Olive, I'm sorry, right at school, we continue to provide childcare here in all of our Mount Olive schools. And Mr. President, Dr. President, that concludes my presentation. I had presided this to all the board members over the weekend, and then my slides, I provided them today as well.
Thank you, Dr., excuse me. Thank you, Dr. Zwicki, any questions from the board? Mr. Robinson?
I have one question on the testing at the high school for the COVID. I saw a couple of things online with people who got, went there and got tested, and they never heard anything, and when they tried to find out about it, they found out that the test was bad, or they just didn't get an answer at all, it got lost. I understand that because I had the same experience. I went there and got the test and all, and somebody, you know, people were saying, well, you know, if you didn't hear anything, I'm sure it's okay, and all like that. But that's not the answer. The answer is, you know, they got to get their act together about getting the results back to people.
So it's a third-party vendor, and it's through the grant. So what we've told everyone, if, so sometimes people, when they fill out the paperwork, there's discrepancies in handwriting because of that. But if you don't hear, they're to email Dr. Breton, and we'll follow up on it. And I've put that out there to everyone in our parent universities and put that out there. As with any testing, you know, built into the algorithm of doing testing, there are some tests that are going to be bad, and some that come back inconclusive. That's by any vendor. But if people don't hear, you know, we can trace all those back, and they say that, you know, sometimes people, when they filled it out, they couldn't understand the handwriting, but Dr. Breton is the point person for that. So if anyone has any questions about the testing, email Dr. Breton, and she gets on it immediately, and we get back to everyone.
Okay, I will tell people.
Dr. Gales, did you have your hand up?
Yes, thank you. I didn't have a question...
Yes. Thank you. I didn't have a question. I had a, more of a comment. And the comment is, this is a really tremendous step forward for Mount Olive, and thank you to everyone who had a part in this. Dr. Zwicki, I know you've been working very hard with your team to make this happen. I just want to make a plea to the community, because as you heard Dr. Zwicki say, the schools are probably the safest place for students to be. The issue is community spread. So I'm appealing to the community. This isn't an opportunity to let our guard down because of the mitigation efforts within our schools. We have to continue to be vigilant and do our part so that this giant step forward can be sustained for the remainder of the year. It's going to require all of us to do our part. If you're sick, your child is sick, please stay home. You know, do what you need to do to take care of yourself, because if not, if you come to school, the risk can be exponential. And I've experienced a couple of times where I've gotten the call about being a part of the contact tracing list. And if you are a household, it affects everyone in your household. You know, it's disappointing when, you know, your kids can't go and play, you know, travel basketball because they're part of contact tracing. So I'm really pleading with the community. Let's do our part to make sure that all of the work that has gone into this, from the administration, can help us sustain this monumental step forward. Thank you.
Anyone else from the board?
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, Mrs. Zire.
Is it premature to ask you about logistics, like student movement versus teacher movement?
I wouldn't say it's premature, but that's going to differ by each building. So I can try and address that question. We're going to keep with the same one-way highway, one-way hallways, not highways. We're going to keep with that, those same patterns that are in the, in our plan and in the road back. And as much as possible, we're going to try and move kids in pods. We're with the same cohort that is more difficult, as you know, at the high school. So we're going to be continuing with the same traffic flows we've been using.
So the students are moving?
Yes.
Okay. Who's cleaning the desks in between movement?
So as per the CDC, we're not supposed to be spraying desks with kids in the room, or when kids are going to be in the room, within one minute of us spraying. So what we have worked out with the Mount Olive Department of Health is that we have wipes available for kids who would like to use them, and we have hand sanitizer. And so we're sanitizing before and after school, and we're doing the UV. So that's one, that's an extra sanitation step beyond what's required of us. But in between each one, we, the CDC's guidance is that we're not supposed to be using those things in between, when kids are going to be there. So it's there, optional for the kids. If they choose to do so, they can do it. And when, and teachers are not to be spraying down desks and things like that with kids sitting in there. But we have the wipes and we have the hand sanitizer.
So as kids enter, it's their option to wipe down their desks?
It's their, yeah, correct.
And then all surfaces?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Anything else from the board?
Yes, one more thing.
Dr. G, sure.
This isn't related to the presentation, but I wanted to ask a question before we got too far into the board meeting. And I know that we had a conversation about the closed captioning for the board meeting. Is that working?
Yes. All of our, all of our broadcasts are closed captioning enabled.
Thank you.
It's similar to, like, you watch a show and you have to select it. So if you're signed into, and I spoke to a lot of people about this, if you're signed into your YouTube account, you can collect, you can select closed captioning, and it'll caption everything.
Thank you.
No problem.
Anything else from the board? I would just like to reiterate, for a minute, a brief minute, what Dr. Gels said. It's a tremendous effort on Dr. Zwicki and his administrative staff, the principals, and everyone really in the community. And just to the community members, you do have that option. If you don't feel it's safe, I don't think any board member, any person in this district would tell a parent to put their child in harm's way. If that's what a parent feels, that's why you have that virtual option. Obviously, you know, research also shows us the best place for kids to be are in school full-time, and I commend Dr. Zwicki on doing that. Schools are the safest places for our kids to be right now. It's safer than going in the grocery store. It's safer than going out to a restaurant to eat. It's safer just really, and probably even just being here right now, although we're in school. But, you know, with that being said, there's never been a spread in a school. We've had instances where students have tested positive, but because of the procedures we have in place, it doesn't spread through our schools the way it has in our community. So, you know, it's a welcomed opportunity for all our students and our parents. Some parents aren't going to be happy with it, for sure, and we'll work with those families. But I'd like to commend Dr. Zwicki and his staff for, well, excellent, excellent plan going forward, so.
Total team effort. And thank you for the board's support. When other superintendents ask how we're able to do this, it's because every time I've said, we, all the things. And I cannot say enough, this time last year, when I said, we need to close school for the PD day to do this. The support of the board is why we're able to do this, because of your discerning questions and your feedback. But the support of the board is how the professionals are able to execute. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Z. I'd like to jump back to Personnel Committee Report. There was a question, and I jumped right into the superintendent's report. So just going back to Ms. Cohen's Personnel Committee Report, is there any board members that had a question?
Was there a personnel agenda sent out prior to the meeting?
No, I'm still working. I apologize for that, but I'm still working with Mark Zidimer on figuring out how we're going to do that, because we do have some agenda items that are not, should, cannot be privy to everyone on the board, based on some other, some factors. So I'm working with Mark and hoping that next meeting we'll have that done.
I couldn't hear what her was working with Mark.
Yes, I'm working with Mark, trying to figure out how we're going to do that, because there are some items on the agenda each week that are not able to be privy to all of the board members. So we've got to figure out how we're going to do that, so it's easiest. And we will get that done, hopefully, for next board meeting.
Can I follow up to that?
Sure.
And this, I'm not the attorney, I'm glad we have the board attorney. But I did take a look at the, the decision regarding conflicted board members. And I did see where conflicted board members are not supposed to vote on items of conflict or participate in the discussion. I didn't read anywhere in the decision that conflicted board members couldn't know. Did I miss, did I miss that?
Dr. Gels, I'm not really sure what decision you're talking about. It depends on the subject matter of the item under discussion. There are certain topics that even the knowledge of it may, may cause an issue, a conflict. And as you know, board members are really held to a very high standard, so we're very cognizant of ensuring that there's no appearance of impropriety. So if you want to have a discussion, I'm not sure what this specific item is that was under discussion, but I'm certainly happy to address it with you after the meeting.
Oh, no, that's fine. Thank you for the clarification. Nope, that was, that was perfect.
Anything else from the board? C and T Finance did not meet. Did policy meet, Mr. Strzachi?
Policy didn't meet. We, our next meeting is on the 8th, but we do have several items on the agenda this evening. We're going to have seven policies that are going to be abolished, either from out of date or replaced or just out of compliance. We're going to have 13 policies on there this evening that are going to be up for first reading. Very quickly, I'll just give you a quick thing on it. One of the policies is board member resignation and removal. By the way, all of these policies are mandated, because some of these have been revised, some are new. The family leave, the New Jersey family, which is NJFLA and the federal FM LA, they have some things that are the same, some positions a little different. The one that struck me the most was, under the New Jersey, you have 12 weeks family leave and 24 months, and under the federal, you have 12 weeks and 12 months. I'm sorry. Yeah, 12, 12 months. You have a policy there, Every Student Succeeds Act. That has changed from the no child left behind. They're going to the ESU now. Title 1, we're going to be talking about student surveys, analysis, and evaluations. There was another one on here that I wanted to just tell you about. You're going to be, you'll read them. You'll see the whole thing there. But we're going to have 13 to vote on first reading this evening. Before I go, I just, I just want to make a compliment to someone. I want to thank the sound people. Thank you for deploying these speakers here. We hear so much better now. So thank you.
Is that it, sir? Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none. Board Subcommittee Report? Oh, I'm sorry.
We did have a Budget Committee. We did have a Budget Committee. I didn't know if you all may repeat.
Oh, yes. I'm sorry, Mr. Kemna. I forgot about that. Please, yes, the Budget Committee Report, Mr. Kemna. I apologize. If it's not on the, if it's not on the agenda, I tend to forget, like Ron Burgundy.
No, no problem. Do you want to do it now?
Yes, absolutely, sir.
Okay. So the Finance and Operations didn't meet this, this past couple weeks, but we did have our initial Budget Committee meeting, with Dr. Zwicki, Ms. Libby, Ms. Jones, Ms. Schlier, Ms. Cohen, Mr. Strzachi, and myself, as the chairperson heads. We, it was just kind of a kickoff. We talked a little bit about the funding, that the district got $900,000 for COVID and expenses there. We're doing a zero-based budget, like we did last year. Talked about the ROD grants, or the hope for the ROD grants that's forthcoming. And then we went through the plethora of projects that we have, and anywhere from some capital projects to additional wish lists of additional personnel we may want to have, and rank them where they stand. But a little preliminary, but we've got a little idea where it's going to go. We'll see where the numbers come in as we meet again. I think we meet in two weeks, so.
Is that it?
That's it.
Questions or comments from the board? Yes, Mr. Strzachi.
I'm always impressed with our administration, always looking to have a new way of delivering excellent education. And there's, there will be something on the, on the budget list that will incorporate several positions into one. We'll get into that at a later date.
Any other questions or comments from the board? All right. Board Subcommittee Liaison Reports. Does anyone have anything to report out? Parent Teacher Association Reports?
I do.
Yes, Ms. We Matt?
The bus drivers?
Yep.
We met last week. Myself, Dr. Gels, Mr. Zire, my aunt Jo Roselli, met with the bus drivers and their representatives, and we hashed out, looking at both proposals, meeting next week, maybe go over some language and discuss further into the proposals.
Super. Thank you. And I have, anything else on the board? I have no Board President Report. Public comments. Members of the community may comment on any action item prior to board discussion. Please state your name and address for the record. All comments must be respectfully presented. Abusive or obscene comments will not be tolerated. Stand up, say your name and address at the microphone for the record, and ask any question on Action Item 6.1, all the way down to 9.15.
I'm sorry, Dr. Giudano. Did we skip PTA reports?
Oh, I just did PTA reports, but you want to go back to them? Do you want to wait till I close public, if someone comes up?
Yes, yes.
Seeing none. Close the public comment, Lynn. And Lynn, for the record, we did not receive any email on action items, questions via action items?
No.
Thank you. Dr. Gels, yes, Parent Teacher Association Report?
Well, I did attend the Moms PTO on 2/17, along with Mr. Robinson. I didn't stay for the full meeting, but for what I did stay for was pretty interesting, because Mr. Feldman gave a presentation on real-time to the parents. They discussed the future of the PTO, because the current leadership is transitioning to the high school. So they're still recruiting for officers for next year. Mr. Regan gave some comments and updates on logistics at the middle school. He talked about the lunches and the protocols for cleaning and social distancing. And when the second trimester ends, March 17th, and he talked about Picture Day and Caps and Gowns on March 8th. He also credited the students were doing well following the protocols. And then, before I left, they went into, like, the Treasurers Report. They're still trying to promote the box tops, because they figured that's the easiest and lowest-hanging fruit to raise money, because as you know, many of the associations are having difficulty in this COVID era raising funds. And there was the question about the COVID dashboard, which I believe has been addressed. And then I had to leave the meeting. And I don't know if, okay.
Any questions or comments from the board? Thank you, sir.
Did you want to mention CPAG?
No, you can, did you, I thought, did we mention CPAG last time? I never made the meeting, so you want to, you want to go into it a little bit?
Okay. So I was able to attend the CPAG meeting. I joined at 7:00. And we talked about, well, I listened to them talk about some, some issues and concerns, and, and we immediately reached out to Dr. Zwicki, who addressed the issues with the closed captioning. And there was some conversation about what constitutes a virtual day. So Dr. Zwicki, thank you for that quick response. And they talked about social emotional learning versus the win segment of the, the schedule, what I need now. There was a lot of positive feedback on programs that are opening up at the high school, particularly the Unified Programs. And then I also shared the link for the Equity Task Force Dashboard. And their next meeting is March 9th, and I had to jump off of the meeting for another meeting.
Dr. Gels was kind enough to jump on for me as, as I was watching my daughter play basketball. I couldn't, couldn't make that meeting. So I appreciate that. Any questions or comments from the board? All right. Seeing none. Approval of monthly expenditures and reports, Dr. Gels?
I make a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the monthly expenditures and reports, Action Item 6.1 to 6.8.
Second.
It's a tie. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none. Roll call, Lynn?
Dr. Gels?
Yes.
Mr. Kemna?
Yes.
Mrs. We Matt?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Strzachi?
Yes.
Mr. Zire?
Yes.
Mrs. Cohen?
Yes.
Dr. Giudano?
Yes. Excuse me. Personal action items, Ms. Cohen.
I'd like to make a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent to move Personnel Action Items 7.1 through 7.12.
Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none. Roll call, Lynn?
Mrs. Cohen?
Yes.
Dr. Gels?
Yes.
Mr. Kemna?
Yes.
Mrs. We Matt?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Strzachi?
Yes.
Mr. Zire?
Yes.
Dr. Giudano?
Yes. Finance and Operations, Mr. Kemna?
The recommendation of superintendent move Finance and Operation Action Items 8.1 all the way down to 8.3. Big, big week.
Mr. Robinson, second that. Ms. Jones, if you didn't hear that.
Thank you.
Questions or comments from the board?
One, one quick question, sir.
Yes, Dr. G.
Under, the transfer is under, under legal fees. I know that we've asked in the past for, like, cost containment for legal fees. Now I see that we're, we're transferring funds to cover legal fees. Are we implementing any cost mitigating procedures? Because I'm concerned that we are now having to transfer, and now that we're going into negotiations, that gives me a little bit of cost for concern.
With the pandemic, we've had a lot of legal fees related to special education. There's been a lot of cases that came up with that. So there was a lot of work, particularly in the summer, where I think was, we were a little bit higher. I know Mark did provide a report where we're at with that. And then there's also been litigation matters as well. But, you know, I can ask Lynn to talk about it. As far as cost mitigation, Mark does check with us and everything, and he does provide us with the reports. But I would look forward to the board's input on what mitigation further we could do.
Thank you.
And if I, if I might add, the, the amount that's being transferred in is And if I, if I might add, the, the amount that's being transferred in is projected through the, the end of the year.
Okay.
So that's a projection. And as you know, we've been involved in some litigation that's driven up the amount as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, roll call, Lynn.
Mr. Kemna?
Yes.
Mrs. Weimat?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Strzachi?
Yes.
Mr. Zaire?
Yes.
Mrs. Cohen?
Yes.
Dr. Gales?
Yes.
Dr. Giordano?
Yes. Administrative action items, Mr. Strzachi.
Yes, I'd like to move on the recommendation superintendent, administrative action items 9.1 through 9.15.
Second.
Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, roll call, Lynn.
Mr. Strzachi?
Yes.
Mr. Zaire?
Yes.
Mrs. Cohen?
Yes.
Dr. Gales?
Yes.
Mr. Kemna?
Yes. I couldn't get it un, unmuted, I apologize.
Mrs. Weimat?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
And Dr. Giordano?
Yes, I'd like to jump back to personal action items. Of note, I'd like to congratulate Mr. Hain on his retirement. I worked with him many years ago. He's a phenomenal math teacher and a phenomenal coach. And he will be missed as a teacher in the Malaf School District. I don't know if he still intends to coach or he's retiring completely. But congratulations, and I wish you all the best. I'd also like to take the time to congratulate our head, our new head boys basketball, baseball coach, I almost said basketball, pardon me. And I mispronounced your name, Pete, but I'm going to give it a shot. Pete Zuccolil, if you want to stand up and, and so the board can see you, congratulations, welcome to Mount Olive. Going, moving on, old business from the board.
Yes.
Dr. G.
Has there been any interest in a board retreat?
Last we left it, Lynn, weren't we supposed to reach out to the New Jersey School Boards and see if there's any extra additional fees?
Yes, there are no.
There are no fees, okay. So that was the first thing. So I'll put an email out to board members. I just want to let them know from Lynn, so information who's interested in it. Can you also reach out to school boards in their timeframe? Do they have, they might be two, three months out, depends on what it looks like for them?
Sure.
Thank you. So we'll follow up with that, Dr. G has an email this week.
Thank you.
Anyone else with old business? New business from the board? Public comments. Students, parents, employees, and community members may comment on any item of interest pertaining to the Malaf School District. Please state your name and address for the record. All comments must be respectfully presented. Abusive or obscene comments will not be tolerated. Stand up, come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and ask away if anything going on in the district. Seeing none, closing the public comment, Lynn. We did have one email coming at 3:10. And as I read through it, I'm just pulling it up. It's from Brian and Dennis, Briann, I'm sorry, and Dennis Jarvis at 54 Deer Park Drive in Flanders. A lot of the questions resolved around the reentry plan. For instance, number one, what is the announcement being made tomorrow about the reentry plan? I think Dr. Zwicki went over that, and all that information will come out for tomorrow. Number two is the announcement that A and B cohorts are combining. If so, when will this occur? Again, that was in Dr. Zwicki's presentation, and he will be going over that in his parent universities. And a lot of these questions, I believe, will be answered in Dr. Zwicki's parental parent universities, meetings he's having with the K-5, 6, 8, and 912 parents. Cohorts combining was the maximum number of students that could be safely in the classrooms. Are you allowing cohort C students to come back in on person instruction? I believe that was answered. And lunch went well, the children attended last week. And just as a comment, thank you to Mr. Kramer for explaining how there were assigned seats marked with tape. What is the plan for when cohorts combine with lunch? Or physically, will lunch be expanded? I believe Dr. Zwicki will answer all those questions in his parent universities as, as he's going through. So I'm going to leave that for Dr. Zwicki to see if those questions get answered in the next two weeks. And if they don't, certainly you can come to a board meeting or have your questions emailed in, and we will review them and go through them that way. So that's, that was the only questions we received. So we're closing it to all public comments, Lynn. Board, board comments, Mr. Zaire?
I have none.
Oof, wow. Mr. Robinson?
I have none.
Oof, we'll move right along. Ms. Weimat?
Stay safe, stay well.
Thank you, ma'am. Dr. G.
Well, I'm sorry I have to break the, the roll here. But, but it's, it's going to be really quick. I, I do want to also congratulate Coateen. I mean, he's just been a phenomenal coach, and every year they do the end-of-the-year track awards, track and field awards ceremony at the high school. It's amazing how he is connected with the kids and what they think and how they feel about him. So hopefully he will continue to coach, but congratulations and best wishes on your retirement. And I just wanted to, to like make a comment about what we're doing regarding equity, because we, we've had a series of activities for students to engage in this month, and I think it went pretty well. And one of the things that I'm going to talk about when the committees resume conversations again, is how do we move our efforts from this idea of talking about contributions or this additive model to being more transformational that leads into social change and how that is reflected in the curriculum. So, you know, good job to Mount Olive. And I think that as we look at transformational curriculum and social change, it will embrace all aspects of equity that are important to this school and to this community. Thank you.
Welcome, sir. Mr. Strzachi.
Yeah, I, I, if it was ever advertised, we would find out that Mount Olive, as far as virtual learning with this COVID problem, is at the top of the class. A lot of school districts have taken Mount Olive's lead, particularly, we were way ahead of the curve when it comes to virtual learning, virtual teaching, also with ventilation and a lot of other areas to combat this problem. And we just stand head and shoulders above a lot of other communities who are really struggling. And I would like to thank our administration and all our teachers for all the hard work they've done.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Kemna?
Yeah, two items here. First of all, thank you to the whole administration for going back to full day, all students, except for the ones that want to stay virtual, school. I think that's so, so important for the students. It's kind of a lost time there, and I, and we've proven that we know how to do it, and we behave ourselves. And I think it was said a few times today, most of the issues come from the outside of the school, not from inside the school. They bring it in, or they, you know, they go to a car with four kids in it, or they go to a pizza party or something like that. But the kids are really going to, really, really going to benefit on that. So thank you for the administration. Thank you, Dr. Zwicki, for making this happen. Second thing I want to welcome, Coach Z. I'm going to call him Coach Z, I apologize. I don't want to destroy your name, but we have a celebrity in our presence, and we usually expect from the first-year coach, all wins, I think, isn't it? Is that what the rules are?
It's in the contract.
It's in the contract, exactly.
I thought you were referring as a celebrity to myself, Dr. Kemna, but I, but it was just my big head getting in the way.
I wasn't talking about you.
Ms. Cohen.
Just one thing. At the last meeting, I mentioned Kevin Stansberry being the Dr. Zwicki's liaison for the library, and most of you know I work at the library. I just want to let everybody know that the library's open. I get so many people that come up to me and say, is the library open? The library's been open for a while now, and it's a really good resource for our kids if they just need to get out a little bit. It's not open fully, but you can certainly do an hour or so on the computers. We have our children's room open, we're starting to kick in some programs, and we have faxing and notary services available by appointment, and of course browsing if you want to pick up books. So just wanted to make that clear. I think a lot of people in, in the town don't know that, and a lot of the students. So we do, we are open for business.
Final words, I'd just like to thank the Board of Ed. It's a pleasure working with all of you, particularly how we galvanized with the COVID-19 ups and downs. I don't think there's a lot of boards out there that are as cohesive as we are. We may not always agree, but certainly we, we moved the district forward in the best interest of our students.